Thank you to everyone that's came today. We appreciate the support and community and students. I look forward to hear from some students that had a great activity, great activity, experience not too long ago. Just wanted to remind everybody that as a school board meeting, this is a very public, open meeting and legally we have to have open meetings, but it is a school board meeting. So the comments are made by filling out a sheet that you should have already received, filled out if you wanted to, but the comments in the, of those that are visiting need to be kept to themselves and not be part of the meeting unless you're called upon and asked. So, but we appreciate you here, being here and appreciate hearing from you outside of this meeting as well. Wanted to just remind everybody, as Mr. Doolan and the board have taken on this new year, it's our mission, vision, our goals are really important to us. We really do want to promote a high achieving and responsible citizenship through our students, through our faculty. We really would like to be the highest achieving rural school district in Idaho. We're working really hard to meet those goals, those visions, those statements. So, thanks for being here. Thanks for all that you do to help us as we support our school district and continue to have a fantastic, wonderful place to educate our students. Having said that, we're going to jump right into our meeting now. Mr. Doolan, if you would have a report for us this evening?
Yes, sir, thank you. This evening, yes, sir. Well, it's morning seminar. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen. What a great, what a great lead in, in reference of our mission. I'm happy to report that this last month, we've been hovering around 93 percent ADA and spoke to the State Department and they said that that's really good. So we're moving in the right direction. What's that say? Well, it says that number one, that our students are doing the right thing, our teachers are doing the right thing, and our parents are doing the right thing by getting their kids to school, and that's huge. Well, and the fact that I bought them all donuts, you know, one day or that week. So maybe that helped out too. But that got pretty expensive, so I think we won't do that again. As you know, all schools held a Veterans Day assembly and student behavior was taught notches at all schools. I couldn't have been, I couldn't have been more proud of our students and reference their behavior for the veterans. And our very own Lieutenant Colonel Grunkie spoke at every, every session. And if you don't know the story about him, he flew, he flew, he retired now, but he flew the AV-8 Harrier and he was, he went and rescued a downed Airman and he told the story that day at the event. It was a great, great event. Federal audit will be here again on Wednesday. We're going to miss it. We'll be at Boise at the ISB conference, but I've got a Zoom call at 1:00 with Kyla to hear what they have to say to us. As you know, our football team, the high school football team placed third in the SRV last Friday night. Our band, high school band swept the competition at Boise State recently, which is huge. Third, third year in a row, I believe. That's huge. Hats off to them and Mr. Fortman. Cross-country placed at State, so hats off to the team and Mr. Hale. Switching gears a little bit, we have some new cameras at the middle school and I know Mr. Carter's happy about that. Now we have coverage in front of the gymnasium, which was a good thing. We didn't before, but now we do. Recently, we sent seven staff members to the family and community engagement conference. Mr. Davies led that up. And that's a conference in which they learned and they talked about different ways to engage the community and get them understanding what education does and how we do it in Weezer. So it was a good time. You've referred to talk about Narcan in the past. Well, I have to report that we have Narcan in every building now and to my knowledge, everybody's had training on how to administer that, that Narcan. And it's nothing more than just a nasal pressure. You guys know more than I do. So even if they do give it to somebody that doesn't, if not overdosing, it's still, it's going to be okay. So they have the training and I think that's really important. Last but not least, last Friday, I went with May. I trusted May to drive me around in the bus with the rest of the bus drivers and we went around and looked at all those evacuation points, all the routes, and they all look good. There's places for everything that we need to have happen in case there's an emergency. And right now, May has given me the updated maps. I'll get them on the slide and we'll talk about that again probably on November the 28th when we have our next emergency response meeting. But they all felt pretty good about that, about that trip. We all went around and looked at all facilities. We ended up going to the Vindome where the, you know, students would be dropped off there for parents to pick them up. But, so other than that, so I'll answer your questions, sir. That's all I have.
I just wanted to make one correction, Mr. Doolan.
Sir.
Our football team took third at State, not in the SRV.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, yes, sir.
It was important.
It was, it is, it's very important.
And...
I think I read that the volleyball team got back in the next state championship.
They did, 3.85, I believe. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We, so we, we could talk all night about what we're doing good. That's, and it's all, it's all coming to fruition and all boils down to having kids in school and doing the right thing while they're in school. And again, we're, I think we're firing on all cylinders. Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. Any questions for Mr. Doolan? Did everybody get an opportunity to look through the administrative reports that we were given? Any questions for any of our fantastic administrators? Put them on the spot.
I do have one.
Sure.
Indian head.
Yes.
Do we have a date for the graduation? I noticed in there that there were two students.
We have two graduates. We are going to have a graduation ceremony on November 30th. It's the last Thursday of the month at 10:30 a.m.
For Park, I was just going to say the $500 we got there, I was calling the property.
Yes, ma'am. And you know, they had their, what do they call that? That bowling, the pumpkin bowling? And they had all this, a great event. The kids loved it and Ms. Mink, you, I speak to that probably, but it was a great opportunity for, for the kids.
It was, it was great.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davies?
Yes, sir.
Do you happen to know the name of the book that Mayor Hibbert read to the third graders? I just... No, I'll put you out of this.
We actually got an English and a Spanish version of it and it was donated to the public library. So it's down there. I can get that for you.
Just curious.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
High school, how was the assembly today? Did it go good?
I thought it was awesome. Yeah. Our kids really enjoyed it. You know, Braxton Nielsen came with a great message about, you know, surround yourself with good people and, you know, no matter your circumstances, you can achieve great things. And so our staff, staff and students alike both, both really appreciated it. It was good.
That's a, is it PBR? Is that correct?
Yeah, he was, he was in the NFR.
The NFR.
Yep, which another league of it, but yeah, he was a, he was a bareback rider who had a terrible injury. They gave him five, a 5% chance to ever walk again. And he talks about how he could have just accepted that and been wheelchair bound from there, but through grit, determination and a strong support system, he was able to overcome that and is now able to walk. So, for me.
That's good.
Great.
Thank you for bringing people in.
Yeah.
And the middle school just had...
Stingray Row.
Stingray Row.
Yes. Yeah, it was great.
I think the kids loved it. My kids always have.
Just another example of the great things that the administrator is doing, just for the day to day, you know, opposite, or move in the right direction.
I should say that that, in addition to that, that Braxton Nielsen was, the reason we were able to bring him in was provided by Gear Up and our sources of strength group, which is a group of students that are kind of, they're, they're a group, a team that's, was voted on by our, by our school to represent them and they're just the person that kids can go talk to if they need to and kind of a support friend. So those two organizations helped pay to bring Braxton in, so.
Any other questions about your reports? Great. Thanks everybody for getting those to us. I, I like how the reports are very, very consistent and start to get a lot of single information and that's very helpful to us. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda then. Everybody have the opportunity to get their prior meetings minutes? Any questions or changes that you might have?
Corrections to the name of the novella that we approved on October 9th. I think it was spelled C-O-R-O-L-I-N-E, just Core Alliance with an A in the middle there, I believe. That's the only thing I noticed. I'll make sure we have the right book approved in our notes there.
Right now. It is. Oh, it's Core Alliance. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'll change that later.
Sorry. I told, I told them that. No, that's awesome.
I didn't think it was a big deal, so I'm not...
I didn't know, maybe there's another book out there called Core O-Liance. I was like, oh, I don't know.
He catches stuff. I read the things the way they were intended. He reads them the way they were written. That's why I didn't do well in English. Okay. Current agenda. Any, any changes to our current agenda that we need to be aware of? Mr. Doolan?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any retirements, resignations that we need to be aware of?
Yes, sir.
I like it when that happens. So do we? Do we have any, any staff that we are considering hiring?
Not at this time, sir.
Well, seems how we have a few openings and I'm not so sure that I'm completely happy. I was happy about that. We're, we're getting through it. It's going well. Let's, let's just move right into our financial report. Kyla, would you?
Okay. Well, if you think 8.33 and we're now at four months, we're roughly 32 and change. And our budget now is expenses are coming in at 29.9. We will, we've had, the revenue at the top shows 45.65% received. We will get another payment from the state November 15th. Right now, our focus and Barb and I have both been in several meetings with the State Department about the unit value. And we, and I know I mentioned it last year and talked to you at length about the, the difference between enrollment versus ADA and, and then there's this pot of achievement that we're, we have to share with other districts. So we're sharing, so those of us that are not bad in a bad position, but not in a great position, we still have to share with those that, that are declining. So it was very interesting. There's probably 120 school districts and I think we counted up about five that were not in protected status. And protected status means that you are not dropping more than 3%. And we budgeted on 74.29 and we're going to come in at 76.6. And I, that's good and it's bad, but I will tell you, last year we were at 80.28. So we have dropped four units and if you consider a unit is about $142,000. That's quite a bit of money left. And, and I will tell you, across the state, ADA versus, or enrollment versus ADA, unit values dropped by almost 656, I believe. So overall, that's nine million plus that the state is not going to pay out in support units. And that's, that's a figure I think we need to let our legislature know that enrollment was a better, better indication. I think they were saying that there were these ghost kids that they were being, and they were being counted in two different schools, but ICE does not let that happen. You get a report that says you have a student that's over a one person. So it's going to affect us, definitely going to affect us. We budgeted correctly. Thankfully, the numbers, I'm going to give kudos to Mr. Wilson because he sweated over those numbers. So 74 is what we budgeted on, we're coming in about two units higher. But it's still, that's tight. That's tight. So anyways, that's, that's my speech today on that. If you see anything that you have questions on, glad to answer. We want to stay about, you know, 32 right now, 32%. And most of our units are coming in that way. The alternative school you're going to see is at 105%. That's not going to grow at all this year because that's the summer alternative school. So that's maxed out. That's done. We pay that. So that, that one's not going to grow. But the rest of them are pretty good and district administration is always a little higher right now because we front load a lot of our district payments that we have to do at the start of the year. So if that looks higher, it's going to go down as it goes on. So the rest of them, I think, are, are pretty self-explanatory. If there's any questions on that?
Well, it's great. The two that I, the two questions that I had were those two, so appreciate.
Yes, okay.
Appreciate you being right up front of those.
And once again, my checking account, balance mine, the Columbia, the payroll is, is, shows a difference of $116.72. And I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around these people. They, they changed the, the perzy for, some people are rated at a different rate and I still have a couple in here that I haven't caught. And so they, actually I caught them, I just didn't change them. How about that? So they went back through again, the same, the same three people. So it'll be fixed. And now I fixed it on the other end too. It won't happen again.
Any question? Good. Okay. Thank you, Kyla. And the paying of the bills, is there any? Did you see anything in the bills?
I asked about the one of telephone, but otherwise it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Okay. That's the end of this consent agenda, so an entertaining motion so that we can take care of those things and move to the next portion of our agenda.
I'll make a motion that we pass the second agenda.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor? All right. As you now, let's go.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. System comments. We have a few comments. We have one individual that would like to read a letter to us and then I've got some information that goes along with that. And another letter that was written to the board. Let's do the other one first. She went home to get the letter. So we have received a letter from Ms. Gonzalez, who lives in the Glenn House, a home that the district owns that was donated to us for the betterment of our school district. Ms. Gonzalez, we appreciate this letter and I'm going to summarize if it's okay. We don't have a motion or anything to vote on with this letter, so I'm just going to summarize it if it's all right with you. And I'll try to, you're here, so I'm going to allow you to make a correction if you feel like you need to. And that's, I'm just going to do that. So Ms. Gonzalez has lived in, in the Glenn House since 2015. The house, as, as we understand, it was donated to us to, to help teachers that, or, or staff of the school district to, that may be in hard times and help them get on their feet before they get some bother, find another place to rent. We, as a school district, have asked that Ms. Gonzalez prepare her and her family to move, move on from that house so that we have that house available to other staff. Originally, we asked, I believe, for the end of the school, end of this school year, or was it before that? But we have asked her to, to prepare her family and to move on for that. We all know Ms. Gonzalez, whether, if anybody knows, and they've been through some very difficult times with her health, financially, physically. And my heart goes out to their family. We would like for that home to be available for, for those types of situations. We, just as, as we have asked her to prepare for that, the letter goes over that, that situation and some improvements that they have personally made to the house and helped with, with some deals like the water heater and things like that. Ms. Gonzalez and their family are currently trying to overcome the cancer, not only physically, but financially. And so going through some debt consolidation have asked us to allow her to be in the home this year and next year, next year through 2025. So that was her asking of us so that they can prepare themselves. Wanted that to be, wanted us to be aware as a school board of their situation. Ms. Gonzalez, I want to say to you that you are a good English teacher and you write like a good English teacher. And it's really, really easy to read and follow through with, with this letter and we appreciate it. We'll definitely take this into consideration and have more communication moving forward before any final decisions are made. All right. Ms. Larue has asked for some time. If you'd come up and state your name and, and your, by policy, your name, your address, and then let us know. Go ahead and let us know. We'll give you three minutes.
My name is Carly Larue. I'm on 407 East Main Street here in Weezer. And is that the details you needed? Just my name and my address?
Got that, got that.
Awesome. And then I emailed the letter, so that's why you didn't have it in your email. So I'll just read what I emailed. Today I was going to talk about some curriculum ideas for our community. It's something that I've talked to a lot of people recently and we're just really looking for edifying curriculum, stuff that's going to be really beneficial to our students' mental health. And so here's my letter. Dear School Board of Trustees, today I'm writing as a parent, youth leader, children's leader and coach of our Weezer students. Over the last few years, I've been privileged to meet hundreds of students in this community as I've gotten involved in a variety of activities, coaching and teaching young people is a passion of mine and I love their energy and enthusiasm. But sometimes I leave the event in pain, not physically, but emotionally. So many of our youth have been abused, many of them have, sorry, many of them tough living situations and many of them have gone through something mentally and emotionally painful in their young lives. Behind these young faces lives haunting memories feared the past and for many even feared the present. When we learn about history, it's often painful as well, but there are amazing redemptive stories out there, ones that our young people can relate to and then be inspired by as the hero of the story overcomes adversity. There are wonderful fiction books where a student can step away from the hurt and the pain and jump into a beautiful and perfect world of fantasy. There is poetry that explores emotions but brings peace as the calming words fill their minds. Our youth needs our support and encouragement. It's tough, it's a tough world out there and their individual lives can be influenced for the better if we at the Weezer School use the right material. It's something funny, we're part of my, so I'll see what I can remember here. So genres such as horror and fiction literature such as The Road that contain cannibalism and infant roasting put gruesome pictures in the minds of our students. Are these the images we want burned into their minds? Even The Road, even Cormac McCarthy, the author of The Road, after multiple grotesque scenes in the story admits through a dialogue in the book, "Just remember that the things you put into your head are there forever," he said. "You might want to think about that. You forget some things, don't you?" asks the young lawyer. "Yes, you forget what you want to remember and you remember what you want to forget. The memories that fill our students' mind are almost endless and our students, our schools, need to be a safe place both physically and emotionally. We need to be extremely careful of the curriculum we choose to present to our students so that they are not traumatized unnecessarily." Recently, I asked a middle school student, who I know has gone through some very difficult situations, if she likes horror movies and books. With a look of fear in her eyes, she replied, "I don't like horror." Another young lady in our school system suffers from schizophrenia. When I was talking with her older sister, the older sister explained that, a bit of what her sister deals with and that her sister, if she were to be exposed to horror books and movies or poems, would be sent into a mental breakdown, from her opinion. Sadly, not all students express their thoughts or emotions as they struggle through their academics. They simply think that the teacher has given them a book and must complete it. It wasn't until having a discussion with my husband about upcoming literature, am I, close to my time? Is that what you're saying, Jim?
You're, you're, you're getting close.
Getting close, okay. So basically, my daughter piped up and she said, "Don't let Landon read The Road." And she explained that, that it was something that she wishes she had never read. And when I tried to ask her about it a little bit, she said, "Mom, I really, really don't want to talk about it. I've been trying really hard to forget these memories or these things that I've read." So basically, I'm just saying that we need to be really careful with what we show our students, present with our students. And yeah, so we just, we need to be really careful because a lot of them are scared to speak out or they don't feel like they can. So the stuff that we put out there as, you know, part of the curriculum needs to be things that can really, can help them, you know. So that's what I was trying to say. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time to, to talk to us. We also received letters concerning this. There was a, a letter taken around and gotten community signatures and this letter, it's, I'm just going to read some of the, some of the very same things that was just shared with us. "There is a lot of negative influence swirling around us. Children are bombarded by more disgusting and discouraging things than, than we parents want or could have imagined. However, Weezer School curriculums can promote just the opposite and help our students mentally, our students' mental health. Through positive and heroic stories and historic events, we can bring hope, courage and a sense of self-worth to the youth of our, the youth of our day. There is a plethora of positive influential curriculum available and we are pleading with our schools to use such materials. We ask our schools, our school district to just approve a curriculum by removing horror units and fiction literature that speaks, that speak of inhumane acts such as cannibalism found in The Road." And then it's, "Please help the Weezer School District to be safe and edifying, edifying place for our children and teens." And it was signed. Six pages worth of signatures of, of different individuals. Another very similar letter that goes over very much the same information, so I'm just going to tell you, thank you Elizabeth Parsons for, for writing this. It's, it's got some of the very same things that we want to, they would, she would like for us to be aware of the literature that we're having our kids read and, and put into their minds. And then one of our students that was spoken of in Ms. Larue's letter, her son Landon wrote this letter letting us know that, "I don't want to read it either. I don't like horror. I don't like horror stuff either and I would never want to watch it or read it, or read about it." So thank you everyone who, who feels the need and the desire to put good material into the minds of our students. I think that ultimately is what we want, aware that there are books that not everybody agrees with or wants their, their kids to read. And I think... And I think one of the first steps that we've taken as a school board, and we talked about this policy not very long ago, is we have an opt-out policy. And when a parent, our parents need to be well aware of the curriculum that their students or their own kids are required to read and be prepared to do an opt-out and allow, which will force our teachers and our staff to find a book that is more acceptable for their students. There are some of these books that I would agree with about my children reading, but as a school member, I've talked to many people also that have read some of this very same literature and don't have a problem with what I have a problem with. So that's where the opt-out policy for us is really important to me, and I personally have used it for our kids. So we are aware of these. We appreciate public information. We want you to keep letting us know as... You know, I haven't read all the curriculum, so... Or all the books that are out there. I really appreciate the information and public's opinion on how that feels, because we want to promote high achievement and responsible citizenship in our kids. It starts right here with the curriculum, and part of our duty is to board into the curriculum. So just because that's part of our duty doesn't mean that we know every word of what's in those curriculums, so I appreciate that information. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Well, I gave my opinion, so I wanted to thank you for being here. We will not add to. We want to make sure that we understand. So also in our comments from our community, we have a group of young men and women, women and men here today, that we would like for them, the FFA team just went to the National FFA Conference, and we have asked that you be voluntold to come and report to us, but we appreciate you being here.
So my name's Joshua Gray. I'm the chapter senior advisor. And I believe it was last, I don't know, two weeks ago, around that time. We had the opportunity to go to FFA Nationals, which was, we left from the high school at around like 3:00 in the morning, got there around 6:00 in the evening, so it's a long flight. The next day, we went to the Cincinnati Zoo, and we got to spend the day there looking at all the animals. And then the next day, we went to the Louisville Slugger Factory, and we got a tour, and we got to see, and hold some of the bats used by some of the pro baseball players, and that was really cool. We got to see how they're made, the different woods and techniques that they do. And then at the end of the tour, we got to have our own mini slugger bat. That was kind of fun. And then after that, we went to see the... Oh my gosh, nevermind. We went to the Kentucky Derby, I want to say it's over here?
Two zones.
Facility. We got to see where the horses are kept and kind of the history about it. We got to take a tour of the museum, not the museum, of the facilities. And we got to see a short film of a typical Kentucky Derby, and that was a screen that was wrapped around the whole room. So it was kind of a really cool pattern. And after that, we got to, the next day after that, we got to go to the opening ceremony of the convention, and we got to hear speeches from the Indianapolis mayor and the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture. And that was super cool. We got to hear kind of the Secretary of Agriculture's kind of experience and what he thinks of FFA as a whole. And after that, we got to go to the college and career fair at the same convention center. There was over 500 booths there, and I believe in total, members that went to Nationals, there was around 75,000 people that went. And at the college fair, I got to talk with colleges from all over the country, and I also got to speak with people from all over the country as well, and I made some friends. And then at the career fair, I kind of got to learn a couple more jobs that I didn't necessarily know locally that were available in other areas of the country, and that was super insightful. And I got to see if there are any new careers that I wanted to go into, and there was a couple that I really loved. And so, yeah, it was overall a really amazing and learning experience.
Wait, I should have wrote down one terrible name. Would you give me your name one more time?
Joshua Negreti.
Joshua, okay. I started with a J, and then I started with a C. Joshua, would you introduce the young ones that you brought with you that also participated?
So this is Lacy Christofferson. She's our chapter president. And this is Aaron Larson, our chapter vice president.
Fantastic. What are some of the jobs that you found that worked that came into you?
So the job that I really liked was from a company called Bear. My brother actually works with them over in Twin Falls, but I did not know that they had the pharmaceutical kind of aspect to them. And I got to talk with them about like what they do, and kind of into that field now.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jim.
How did you guys qualify for Nationals?
So there, we applied to go through an application process that we did. You can also qualify by competitions. However, we just did the application and were able to go.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Joshua, I think, what is this young lady's name?
Lacy.
Lacy. I'm not sure. Lacy and...
Aaron.
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 That's what I was saying.
You're both Christoffersen?
No. Aaron Larson.
Aaron Larson, okay. I'm sorry.
You're better than that, Kyle.
Lacy, you are the...
Aaron's sister of mine.
You are the president, right?
Yes.
And then, Aaron, you are...
I'm the vice president.
Okay, all right, perfect. And how many of you guys went?
There are 12.
12 of you, okay, thank you. Both, this is...
Yeah, both of us went.
Both of you went?
Yeah.
Rob and Mrs. Matthews, okay.
Justin Erickson also went as a parent advisor.
Justin Erickson also went.
Yeah.
Who?
Justin Erickson went as a parent.
Okay, thank you.
Did you two, either one of you have a different experience than what Joshua? Not to put you on the spot, but it's totally...
No, I think that it's a great learning experience. I went my sophomore year. I wasn't able to go this year because I had a wedding. But, yeah, I think that Josh explained it really, really well. You get to connect with tons of people that you don't even think would come that far. But, yeah, I think it was really cool. He did a good job explaining.
Great.
Mr. Bush, if I could, would you be able to mention some upcoming events?
Yeah, I can mention some more.
Fantastic.
So so far this semester, the first week of the school year, we have a kickoff. That's for anybody who wants to come, is interested in FFA, whether you're signed up yet or not. We leave, I think it's a two-week window for kids who don't really know what FFA is and kind of want to test it out before they pay their dues. And then we also have a chapter movie night, which gives us all a chance to get closer with our officers and other members of our chapter. We also hold a lot of community service events, such as Rake Weezer, which is, that's going to be this Friday. I'm not sure on the time. 10:00. We're starting at 10:00. And then we also serve at dinners, such as Festival of Trees, which is Thursday. We also have a lot of fundraising events, too. The most recent one that we're doing right now is our fruit sale. That started on the 8th. Pickup is on Tuesday. And then we also have a second round in December as well. And then in January is our next overnight trip for Gen State. Yeah, that's...
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the fruit sales, and I've participated...
Royal customer.
Quite often, and I haven't heard about it yet. So some of my neighbors probably should kind of talk to me, because I know other people that will want some today and won't get any other way. Great, I appreciate you being here, the three of you, and giving us that report. I love to hear from our students. So, thank you. That wraps up our public comment. Are you pointing at somebody else, or are you saying it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You can go if you want. Before we get to clear to the end, I would like to thank Mr. Walker for being here with us. Not to put you on the spot, but we'll have Mr. Walker up here sitting with us beginning in January. Congratulations and thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the opportunity to run for that and being here to help us out. I know, I'm trying to get my mouse to work. Weezer Education. I haven't forgot you.
I didn't. I didn't. I'll remind you.
I appreciate that.
Nicole Pink with Weezer Education Association. And I first of all want to tell, want to say, because I know all of our members would feel the same way, and they're gone. I love watching our students grow up, because last I, they were fifth graders, and I love watching them grow up and do amazing things. And FFA, amazing. And I'm with you. My daughter has been gone for a few years, and I don't hear about the fruit sale anymore. And I need my fruit, so we might send people... I know, okay. I think that the theme of what I'm going to talk to you about tonight is being involved in our, like interacting with our community again. I think now that COVID is gone, and I see the community coming into our schools, such as Stingray, Rob, and I miss his name, but just went to the high school. But I love having community members come into our school, and in the same return, our class, our kids are getting out into the community. Kids go onto FFA events. Mrs. Thompson's class at the middle school, she has kids, they went on a field trip to the Weezer Signal American and saw the, do I call it a printing press? Is it done? Frozen in time with paper still in it, and just taking them back to an age of, but interacting with the community in that way. She also has students tonight who are at this moment at the, well, not quite at this moment, they're at the city council meeting. And they researched and collaborated together to investigate problems that they saw in Weezer, and she said most of them were about the roads and the sidewalks, things that are concerning to them. And so they researched and collaborated, and they're presenting to the student council tonight their concerns in groups. So I just love that as educators, we're back to bringing people in and sending kids out, and I think that's good for everybody involved. We are, I'm going to extend again that we all would love to have you, see you come and be in our classrooms, mine or your, you're always welcome in my classroom, always. And I know other people would say the same thing. And then I just want to touch on one thing that we are continuing, I know educators, we are continuing to seek out information and have conversations, to have our questions answered about the IEP process and how it's morphing perhaps, and doing what is good for students, but also still honoring teachers' time and teachers' expertise in that process. So I know we are continuing to have and have conversations and ask questions of the people in the know when it comes to IEP and special ed. So that'll be a continuing conversation. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for that report. All right, moving on to riveting. We have been through so many policies in the last couple of months, and they run together, but I really appreciate the dedication of Mr. Wilson and Mr. Doolan and the staff that are going through these. I know as administrators, you've even had some put in front of you to make sure that what you do and see is in line, and we're doing our very best, and we will have an updated policy manual one of these days. But this is the life we live right now, and it's riveting. It's riveting. So let's talk about these action items, Mr. Doolan. The first one on here is considering the policies, 1 through the 3000s. Here it says first reading. Is it really?
I noticed it's on there as a first reading and a second reading.
You'll remember we...
We had a few.
Oh, but it was just the ones that we edited.
We had to break it down.
That's what I assigned, right?
If you go back to our last time we met, this is the first reading of those 1 through 3000s.
Yeah.
Which everybody agreed that day.
And they're in there in a zip folder. We want to bring them up. They're there.
They are.
And those were the ones that you looked at, but you didn't take any action at the work session, and we were going to do these at a first reading, but you did go through each one of them.
Yes, we did.
As well as the 6000s. Hate to jump ahead, but...
So Kyler, is there any reason why, help me out here, any reason why we can't just talk about, okay, we have the 1 through 3s, the first reading is 6000s? There's not a reason why we can't do one action item of those particular items, or should we keep them separate?
Well, okay, so what happens is, I know we put it out there, but we have to do a first reading and we have to do a second reading.
Right.
But the first reading is so that public comment could be made?
I'm just wondering, we can keep the 1 through 6000s that we have on here as agendas first readings. We can just do one motion? Or do we want to do a motion?
There's no motion on a first reading.
Oh, no, okay.
You just say, okay. But you can at this time say, gee, I had a consideration on this policy that I would like to change it. And then, but then next one time, when we're doing the second reading, we better have it all in place, ready to go. That's the motion time.
Yeah, so that's what I need, is just to keep, we have to remember doing this correctly. So anybody have any questions on those policies, the 1000s, 3000s that we were just talking about, that we did not do a first reading on last time?
I guess my question then is, the ones that were entered in here in assembly show that the last date they were modified was 10/10. If we didn't do a first reading on these, was it because we had changes to them? Is that correct?
Well, you reviewed it. I put the review, but not adopted. So they should be saying, they should be saying first reading.
So I know, like, for some of these, we did suggest some changes to those. Are we expecting those changes to appear in the next edition of them? Because in these editions of them, the ones, specific ones that I remember changing aren't changed. I guess that's my question.
They should be changed. What particular one are you...
2340.
And what was that that you wanted changed?
That was, I believe we had a concern about changing the language to get rid of the word "right" to and change it to "such as" in section number four of that policy. In the blue on page number three.
No, mine's open.
Oh, you're not a bunch of either? Okay.
Mine's, I got the...
Well, I will look at that. You want the word "change" from what, to what? You want the word changed from what to what?
Right to.
Right to, to shall?
Such as.
To such as.
The word such as is already in there, such as the right to. And just getting rid of the right to.
The right to, so just saying such as in a motion.
Okay.
I'm not saying the way it is. I actually did go through to make sure, I just was assuming the notes. So again, this is a first reading. So we'll just take the opportunity to go through some of that.
And then you can certainly let me know what you find and I will change that as we can.
But this, then the six thousands were the same ones that we just went through two weeks ago?
And six thousands.
So we'll just have to look through that, the same thing with the six thousands for make sure that the changes that we suggested are in there. But in the, those first two, if you're okay with us just moving in, moving on with the agenda, we'll make sure that if you have any questions, that it comes up in our next meeting so that it doesn't go through a second reading without those changes being made. We do have a few of the one through three thousands though that we have been through and this is considered a second reading. And that will require a motion and some action being taken. Is there any questions on those three thousands? The one thousands through the three thousands is a second reading.
Thirty-two eighty-one.
Thirty-two eighty-one, we left out. We did not even consider that a first reading, so it should not be. So we need to make sure that that one is not listed. Please not move forward. So that one, Kyla, needs to be taken clear out, please. We did acknowledge that we need to do more work and have something in place, but that one is not the, not the policy that we would like to move forward with. Thirty-two eighty-one, for those of you that are here, is a gender identity policy that don't feel like it feels our, our community, our school district.
And just from the policy perspective, from the state, there's still kind of been a holding pattern of what to do. It's kind of been a state put on the, on the wall, so.
Yeah. Any questions on this? Are you still trying to get it to come up?
It's yours, sir.
So. We, we. You're getting your note cut out. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. I also, for those of you that may be a little frustrated with us taking our time, well, how many, we went through, how many policies two weeks ago? Sixty?
Sixty on the first pass and then we went into the seven thousands.
And we, and then we added the seven thousands, which was another.
Sixty.
A lot. So we're just trying to make sure that our notes and what we talked about are in line so that we don't have any surprises when, oh, your policy says. And I think we started with our last meeting, we started at nine-thirty and those of us that left last left at noon or after, afternoon. It was a long night. I don't see any now myself. Okay, so in order to have a second reading, so we can get that in our policy manual, that one takes action. So I would entertain a motion to consider those policies, the one thousands through the three thousands that were listed.
Outside of thirty-two eighty-one.
Outside of thirty-two eighty-one, that can be in the motion, but I need a motion for that to move forward.
I'll make a motion that we consider as our second reading of the three thousand policies outside of policy thirty-two eighty-one.
I'll second that.
And just to clarify, there are some lower, there's some ones and twos and there used to have three thousands. I just want to be fair. I just want to make sure that it's, it's correct and still seconded.
Yes.
All those in favor of that second reading?
I agree.
Yes, unanimous. We also were given a whole bunch of seven thousands, which are, have more to do with, what's the correct? Procedures, but financial procedures. So there's not, there's, I don't want to say no wiggle room, but there's very, very little wiggle room of how our financials are taken care of within our state, within our school district set by state policy. So there's a lot of seven thousands and if we want some really good nighttime material, this, this could be it. This could be it. So we've had a first reading of those. We considered a first reading in our last meeting, but if any of you have gone through and read, any of you have any thoughts that you want to make, bring up, any questions?
You know, just some spelling and grammatical issues, but I don't, can we resolve that outside of?
Kyla, can we, can we approve it and just spelling and grammatical things still make those changes even though we approved?
As long as it doesn't change the.
The verbiage.
The verbiage, I'm fine with that, but I think you're going to have to, I don't know, I think that's not going to work out real well. You have to adopt, I mean, when you do your second reading and you make a motion to adopt the seven thousands, so is it going to change the, is it going to change the intent or the content of the policy?
The only one that I could see of possible changing, not the intent, content, because obviously going to change if you're changing some words a little bit.
Okay, then you can't approve that policy.
Seventy-one hundred is the only one that I'm, that I'm seeing in there that's really.
Read it the way it should have been celebrated in Dyer. Good at that.
Seventy-one hundred is the budget programming planning one. And the only thing I saw on there was the actual, the first sentence, the annual budget provides evidence of the board's commitment to meeting the objective and goals of the district's instructional programs. The next sentence goes into saying the budget supports the immediate and long-range goals and established priorities within all areas, instructional, non-instructural, and administrative programs. So I guess my concern with that is should we just remove the word instructional from that first sentence and say that the annual budget is evidence of the board's amendment to meeting the objective goals of the district's programs, plural? And then the next sentence addresses those programs that we're talking about? And that we were removing the word instructional from something that shouldn't have instructional in that.
That's for you guys to decide, not me.
I know. This is why we're here till noon on those policy days is because John brings stuff up. I apologize.
So, so really removing the word instructional and saying the objectives, goals of the district's programs, the budget supports the immediate and long-range goals and established priorities within all areas. I, you're, and then it defines instructional, like you said, so I.
I just don't want to see that we have evidence that it's instructional programs without it's to non-instructural and administrative programs.
I think it is because I think we, I think, I don't think it changes the policies. It goes down and redefines.
Instructional.
Instructional, non-instructural and administrative. It says those very specific things and I see what you're saying. I do. I'm just not sure by changing that word that it changes the functionality of.
The only other one I had in it was seventy-four oh four. We have in there listed as do not adopt, but it's in there as part of our second reading.
That's, we're not going to adopt that one.
So should it even be in that then?
Well, it was in there for you to look at, but we're not going to, I mean, that's what you say, you say that's what you say.
Not adopt it, yeah.
So in our motion.
No.
Make sure that we have the seven, adopting the seventy-four oh four. Okay. I would entertain a motion then.
I'd make a motion that we accept the seven thousands as a second reading, except for seven four zero four, which was recommended to not adopt. I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. Yours unanimous. All right, we've been through a lot more policy. We're going to move on to considering a new bus purchase and this is an ongoing situation where we're always trying to talk, we're always talking about new buses and.
And we're never getting them.
Hopefully one of these days we get a new bus.
Next year. I know we love this topic. I remember sitting right there thinking, oh my gosh, here we go again. Since I'm here now, here we go again. The bus you approved last year, we'll get it next year.
In October of twenty-twenty-four is when the activity bus is scheduled to be ready.
So, yeah, next October. So what we need, yes, ma'am. So what we need to talk about tonight is, is getting on the docket to get another bus. But my question to you is, remember how last year we talked about the little white bus? Because we can't use a little yellow bus, but we can use a little white bus. So my question is, think about that, toss that around. And I brought May today to give us some information on both, if you'd like, and then we can task me and I can, we can go out and get more information for a little white bus or whatever you guys would like to, for their domain.
Okay, so I talked to Brad Carpenter at Western Mountain Bus and right now production of a new bus, if we ordered one right now, would be fifteen months from now. So if we wanted, if we want to have another bus ready to go, we need to order a new one now. And I gave Mr. Doolan the quote for what a new one would run as if we ordered it right now. Earlier this afternoon, Kyla went on the internet and we found several used transit vans down in Utah that were twenty-twenty-two with twenty-four thousand miles for sixty-eight five. Mark Donick at hometown motors is supposed to let me know tomorrow what it would run to get us a new one through them and what used ones he could find. He would have the information ready for me tomorrow with that.
Is that a fifteen-pack thing you're talking about or?
Fifteen or less passenger van. That way it would not require a CDL driver.
Do you see a lot of those across country at all?
Right.
Seems more efficient than the straightway buses.
Now, just consideration though, that we have a depreciation schedule and not purchasing and not getting a bus hurts us about ten years out for not getting it because the depreciation schedule is such. So just consider that.
Right now, we're two years without a bus.
Right, and the white van is not put on the depreciation schedule. So that's another thing.
Strictly out of the school budget. The state does not have anything to do with it.
I think that's one of the things we talked about when we were talking about that last time.
So none of it's going to be reimbursable. It would just be an outright buy that the school district would own. But it would not require a CDL driver, which would make it easier for the coach or somebody else that could drive it.
There's some coaches that don't want that in a bus.
But right now, if we want to have another bus waiting in the queue, we need to order it now, is what, is what I'm.
So, so in this consideration, we need, we need to talk about, it's good to have that information, but as far as the depreciating of buses, we also have another, probably a yellow bus that we need to be talking about as well, right? It's, if we, if we do a white bus, that should not negate the fact that we still need a yellow bus.
That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to restate that, that it was, it's either a yellow bus or a yellow bus and a white bus that really needs to be talked about.
Right, both of them. But we need to order now to have one fifteen months from now.
So we need a yellow bus.
And I'm sorry, I put that supporting document, I added that to our, I see that policy.
I know, I suppose.
I'm sorry, that is not, that was not.
So, so a new yellow bus is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We're talking up here just for you. We have attachments, but the wrong attachment was uploaded, so we're, we're just trying to find out. A new yellow bus is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-five percent of that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Right, eighty-five percent back in the state.
Eighty-five percent is reimbursable.
So.
It's almost a no-brainer.
That's right. Well, we need to keep our, we need to keep our buses at.
And now we go through, we don't have to do the formal bid process, right?
Right, we go through Sourcewell and they are already the low, they already have the lowest bid or the lowest price that you can get a bus built for. And we do, and we do that through Western Mountain Bus. And that, so the quote that he sent me a couple of weeks ago, that would be the price that we would pay when it's over fifteen months from now.
And that satisfies that bid process.
Right, right. We don't have to go out to bid for it. We can go ahead and say, yes, let's order it, let's get it going.
Yeah.
Just a follow-up question from the state reimbursement side of things. How, how many state reimbursements do we get for school buses? Every school bus we buy, we get state reimbursed for eighty-five percent or is it per year or how's that work, do you know?
Then the, the new bus that we purchase is, we get eighty-five percent reimbursable. The other buses go on the depreciation.
I'm going to just, I'm going to talk about that for just a second. I think we get depreciation, so it goes out over this, so in, okay, so let's say we have twelve, fifteen buses?
We have twelve routes.
Okay.
And we have probably.
Fifteen buses?
Oh, we got more than that.
Seventeen buses?
Twenty-two buses.
But some of them are beyond life, some of them are done.
Right.
So let's say we have fifteen to seventeen. So some are, you know, as a depreciation schedule, an accountant's going to tell you that, you know, some are going to be depreciated at two thousand and we get that back, but we get it back gradually. So bus that we buy at a hundred but we get it back gradually. So bus that we buy at a hundred and forty-five thousand here is not eighty-five percent, but in the long run, it comes out eighty-five percent, but it's not giving it to us right away. So we have to put the money out, we do get some money back, but it, it does affect our, our depreciation schedule by not having that bus and getting that bigger, because, you know, at first, you're gonna get a much larger, and then it's gonna get end of life, and then we're not getting any money out of that. So that's why she said there's, there's probably twenty in our fleet, but about fifteen that are on the depreciation schedule. And, and we do turn that in, and we do get, the state does some, some calculations with that. The eighty-five percent is maybe for our, for our mechanic, we get eighty-five percent of his salary and benefits, and fifty percent of, of the salaries and benefits for the bus drivers, and there is a huge, I will tell you, this spreadsheet doesn't even fit on the thing of how that bus is calculated and what we get back from the state. It's, it's a huge process. Riley's been doing it. It's, it's due every September first, and then we come in and we get, we get some money back, yes, yes. But it's, it's best to consider keeping your fleet up, because if you had a whole bunch of old buses, you're not getting anything, because you've already gone end of life.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Which way more than you wanted. I could talk all day finance.
Should I put you in a pause for you?
No.
I'd make a motion that we purchase or order a new bus that will hopefully come in fifteen months from now to add to our fleet of buses.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of a new bus? I, it was unanimous. So now we've made that motion. I, I thought of a question, but it's, it's not relevant to us. You said we're two years out. Or, we still have bus, we still have the bus we approved last year coming next October. Are we also expecting a bus from two years ago that they voted on?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so we're caught up until.
Just the activity bus that was ordered in March won't be ready until next October.
And then this one?
And that's what we ordered one now.
So if we order one now, we won't be so behind in the.
Yeah, no, I just was verifying that, that there wasn't a third one out there that had already been.
No, 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 we got the ones other than that one.
Oh, yeah, I can talk about it. Actually, Dave, do you want to talk, Barb, you want to talk about the federal grant, the procedure?
Before we move on from the buses, we still, will still, and maybe, maybe in the next meeting as well, we still need to have the conversation about the white bus. And the smaller passenger bus.
Yeah, you can't do that.
No, I just wanted to bring out that we've, we've talked about it a little bit, but that's, we still need to consider having that conversation, so. All right, I'd say my piece. The next thing on the agenda is federal grants.
Fastest bus conversation.
It was, was it?
Most of them, no. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time to this to the lady from Iowa.
Well, I'm glad to speak about it. Let's just say that Dave and Barb, thank gosh, for both of them, have been doing the federal grants and working on that piece, and Mr. Doolan alluded to it, that they're coming on Wednesday, and they have a few things to review. But one of the things that they asked for us to do last year, last spring, was to have, we have to have this thing called an Edgar manual, and so we have to follow procedures in an Edgar manual. This is almost the, I would say, parallel manual to the Edgar manual. It looks a lot the same. Mr. Davies wrote it. And it's the procedures that we do already in the Edgar manual, but now it's written out in a procedural manual, and you have to approve that in order to meet the requirements for the federal audit on Wednesday. Did I get it? There you go.
It's about procurement.
It's about procurement and how we can't spend it on this or that, and really, it is delineated, but it's delineated in the Edgar manual, so it's just delineated further.
October thirtieth, like one.
Well, we just, we just. We just, we didn't have a manual like that. They asked us to have the manual, and they gave us a template from the State Department, they did. And so this just put Weezer School District in, and it's, it's a good thing to have. I mean, it's not bad. I'm not, I'm not against having it. It's just that it's not a lot of new information besides what's already been approved by you by the Edgar manual.
It's just keeping us compliant.
There you go, yeah.
And we're still bound by all the district policies as well. Sorry.
And that's action. So I would make a motion that we approve the federal grants management procedural manual as presented to us.
Thank you.
I will second that.
All in favor of approving that manual? I, any opposed? I think it was unanimous. It was unanimous by those who were here. All right, that meets the end of our action items. That's.
Well, sort of.
So discussion items, do you, or I'll open up too, because I can. Anybody have any future gen items that we would like to have on here so that we can?
I appreciate the F A kids coming. Thank you for doing that, so I can keep doing some of the student organization organizations.
Is there, is there any, I'm gonna ask administrators, if I may, is there any upcoming events that our students are gonna be participating in this next, between now and the first of December?
Yeah, there'll be a lot of Christmas concerts that are happening. We just finished a musical in high school.
The, I believe it's the second grade classes at Pioneer School will be helping with the festival of trees and helping with decorating and performing some sols and stuff tomorrow as part of that setup.
We have our Thanksgiving meal to speak.
I was gonna say big Thanksgiving lunch. Yeah, Thanksgiving lunch on Thursday.
Parker Pioneer Thursday.
So tomorrow, tomorrow high school, tomorrow's up high school.
Middle school's Wednesday, and we're from Pioneer on Thursday.
Nothing.
Mr. Davies, could you, like, let us know the schedule for the Christmas?
Yes, I will. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I will email those dates to Mr. Doolan, and then he can share those with you guys.
The reason I ask, and I appreciate that small report, is what can we have the kids come reporting next time? I, I think it's fantastic to have the kids here reporting to us about things, so please reach out to us if they, if there's something that happened that we could get them here and report to us. I think it only builds their character and their leadership as well to come and report. Let us know, because we, we love to hear from them.
Well, I've already, I've already reached out to Mr. Carter, and with your, with your permission, we're gonna have some student council members come and share with us what's going on in middle school, right in the student council.
Fantastic. I think Mr. Doolan, on our future agendas, we need to visit, I would love to have students here every month.
Okay.
One way of maybe experiencing high school student body one time.
Okay, yes, sir.
Maybe students coming, that'd be awesome. Any other thoughts? All right, accreditation report?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted, Mr. Dickerson, to give a quick brief on where we're at and when they're coming and all the good things to do for the kids, please.
Yeah, so we're, this year, we're going through an accreditation. Mr. Clark and myself, over the summertime, went to a conference in Boise to learn all the processes of, of the accreditation. It's changed a little bit from the last time that Mr. Davies did that, which we see often, and there's, there's quite a bit to it. But essentially, what it is, is an evaluation process of our school to make sure that we meet, meet established standards of quality and effectiveness, is essentially what it is. We'll have a, an internal review that we do ourselves, and then an external review will come in and they will go over the, I guess, the documents and the evidence that we've kind of compiled to see if we meet those standards. Then they'll come and do an onsite evaluation that happens February. Happens in February? February, I believe, for some reason, I think it's the twenty-first. I can't remember offhand, but it's towards, towards the end of February where they'll go through that. It's, it's quite the process. There's a lot that's gonna go into it. You know, we're looking at our handbooks, we're looking at our curriculum, just all kinds of things. We're taking student surveys, parent surveys, stakeholder surveys, all kinds of different things that are gonna go into the process. And I have a printout, if you would like me to send it to you of everything that is included in it. It's about that big.
I don't need the printout. Maybe if it's that much on one page.
Yeah, right. Are there any questions?
If you have any, have any needs from us, let us know. Do you have any questions about that?
No, I don't.
Although I was considering, I was like, yes, isn't that, maybe I could have to read them. Do you have any indication?
Yes, sir. Can you take a minute?
Yeah. That's awesome.
To whom that may concern, my sister Patsy Cretch lived in Payette and taught in Weezer for many years. Patsy passed away last year. We had her service in Payette on Saturday, September sixteenth. The superintendent attended the service and brought a beautiful floral wreath to put on her marker. We were very pleased that he took the time to come to Patsy's service. We would also like to thank the school district for the gorgeous wreath. It was so thoughtful of both the superintendent and the school district. Thank you very much. We appreciate your kindness. Mary Sue Cretch and Mike Cretch. Mr. Doolan and the Weezer School Board. The Weezer Education Foundation wishes to thank you for the memorials in memory of Patricia Bailey, mother of Michelle Bailey Ford, and the father of Shelley Travers. The funds donated will be used to assist the students in the Weezer School District. Thank you, Cindy Campbell, Weezer Education Foundation, a board member.
And that superintendent, not to be.
Yeah, well.
We went and didn't know Patsy, but the superintendent that went to the funeral that was in Payette was Jim Reed, and he brought a beautiful bouquet, and it was made by our FFA, by Patty Matthews and her group, so it was really, it was red and white, it was so, if Patsy would have loved it. So if anybody that worked with Patsy, they knew her and loved her, so.
She was there when I was.
Yes, yes.
Good speech usage.
Yes, so she's, she's pretty sweet right now, but anyways, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Well, so at this point in our agenda, we have an executive session, which what I would really like to do, Mr. Wilson, ah, Mr. Wilson, sorry. What I'd really like to do is take a quick break.
Sure.